And then what I'll do is, just prior to roll call, I'll have everyone on the phone announce their, go ahead and announce everyone who's on the phone as well in attendance, so that we'll have a record, a clear record of who's here. This Commissioner Campbell, anywhere close? To Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Boreum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, you're hereby notified that a special call meeting of the City Commission is called to be held at the regular meeting place of the City Commission at City Hall 201 North Second Street in the city of Palaca to begin at 4:00 PM, Tuesday, March 24th, 2020. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss the city's direction on COVID-19. Please govern yourselves accordingly. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're gonna go ahead and have our invocation. Everyone, please stand for our invocation. Move by our heads. Heavenly Father God, we come before you right now, asking for your guidance as we move forward within this community. Lord, we ask that you be with those all around this world, all around this country, and all throughout this community, who are dealing with this pandemic at this time. Lord, we ask that you allow us to behave with civility. Lord, that we all become respectful of one another, and that we follow the guidance of those in leadership throughout this community as they set standards that are gonna best generate outcomes for our health. Lord, we ask that you just continue to be with us, but that you allow us to remain safe and free from any hurt, harm, and danger. Christ's name, and pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move forward with our roll call.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Vice Mayor Mick Brown?
Is Vice Mayor Brown on the phone? We don't have her on the phone.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Commissioner McCaskill?
Here.
President?
For the record, we do have a quorum. Also, just for the record, everyone in attendance telephonically, can you please state your name for the record?
John Uhl.
David Barton.
Lieutenant Baker.
We have to have here at EOC Matt Reynolds, Mary Garcia, Ryan Simpson, and Chairman Turner.
Matt Reynolds, Mary Garcia, Ryan Simpson, and Chairman Turner. Vice Mayor Brown is also on the phone. Is there anyone else? We've seen no one else at this time. We're gonna move to public comments. Public comments, we'll be limited to three minutes. Nobody will be taking on topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seen no one. We'll close public comment. As we go into public comment, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Ryan Simpson or Mary, someone from EOC, if you mind giving us an update, just for the record, so we have some information at this point.
Sure, this is Ryan Simpson speaking in good afternoon, after long. I'll go ahead and start with a general situation update overview, and then I'll turn it over to the Department of Health of Platte County, Ms. Garcia, to continue. Currently, right now, the emergency operations center is activated to level two, partial activation, running as late as we can with staff. We are currently operating on call center function, to take calls from residents, as well as supporting the Department of Health. The Department of Health is currently in a unified command role with Platte County Fire Rescue. And currently, right now, as it relates to cases in Florida, there's 1,412 cases, COVID-19 cases currently. There is, as reported, this is out of 1,400 hours today, the key Florida fatalities, 259 COVID cases have been hospitalized, and 47 counties are reporting cases in their families. But that's the emergency operations center activated to level one, one four, to get emergency management, this is current contact, that would be used to be in the regular daily talks calls. We have received meetings from local healthcare providers, and the Michigan State fulfillment. Right now, the state of Florida is operating under a number of executive orders. We have coordination awareness, our legislative executive orders in Shoreham, or the EOC, and the community system in Washington City, does not access us. Currently, right now, are over our contract in the Department of Health, that they are getting a new command for this activity.
You're breaking my line.
Over to you, Ms. Garcia, or this call provides further instructions. But before I do, I have to entertain questions, just with regard to the information which I reported. Any questions?
Any questions from the Commission?
I'm here. Sorry, go ahead.
Poor quality, poor quality.
Yeah. This is the information disseminated on the handouts. Is there any? Any questions? I know one of the questions that you're gonna get is, how are how are the testing standards determined on a community-wide basis?
Understood, and please allow me to allow for the Department of Health to bring that up first, and then we'll ask, we'll entertain questions, we said we about that. If there's any questions, specific to the EOC's operation, or conditions in which the EOC is working, or operations at EOC, I'll be happy to answer those, answer those types of questions.
One more time, repeat it?
Nothing happened, just go ahead there. I'm a public area, so I'll be telling you here, the people.
All right, whoever that is, I need you to reach your phone. Ms. Garcia, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, just one.
Hi, this is Mary Garcia, I'm the administrator for the Florida Department of Health in Platte County. I just want to reiterate from today, we have two positive cases in Platte County. And this team that is here at the EOC, we have been actively working basically on surveillance, on any contact for those two cases. There is an algorithm that has to be fulfilled, that was required by the EOC changes, a little bit every day. But there's an algorithm before we can send someone to be tested, but that everybody that is in contact has been reached, has been reached out to, the first case will be working on the second case now. They are assessed, they are put down on stratosphere of risk. And those individuals, depending on their risk and their system, are either tested, they are actually asked to quarantine for 14 days. We ask them to self-monitor, with picture check daily. And those that are not in our police grid, and those are the same things, same process. We ask, you know, if someone here is a healthcare worker, and those systems change, but those are algorithms that are provided to us by the EOC, and those will be followed for testing. So, Platte County, as of late, yesterday, we have run 97 tests in our community. And all of, there are about 40 that are still outstanding, and we have not received results yet. So, there are 55 negative tests in 40 Penland at this time. And on our conference calls just a few minutes ago, there are testing, you know, there are so many that are coming from all over the state, with certain labs, that are state-run labs, the timing for getting those batch and portability of the treatment. We argue those flagging that we think are paramount importance, importance, so that every test is quickly as possible. And that's basically what we do, guys, surveillance is one of those things you do well. And we have been asking everybody to please comply, with social distancing, and hand washing, I know I get teased a lot about hand washing, but that has proven to be the one thing that really works with this virus. And I'm there, Kate, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Garcia?
I did forward this here on a really, really good video, that was sent to me from a friend in Coria, on the, about the coronavirus. And it is a long, I've had 30 or 40 minutes, it's very educational and helpful if you've got questions on this tree, and how it changes and fills.
So, we'll, what we'll do is, we'll publish, we'll publish that as well. And go through there.
Are there any questions?
Are there any questions at this time? Hearing no questions. We just wanna thank you guys for the work that you're doing right now, and in this community.
Sorry, I apologize, because he went upside down. First with CDC employers, describing guidelines on how to avoid the city of all public people on this, being protected, please, to be taken out of the city, and of course, with lots of ridiculous guidelines for all, just how to take your employees and people out.
Somebody proceeded to the group, I'm planning to walk in, and Dr. Monk is our doctor on site with our team. He is in the EOC at this time for the rest of our lives.
I apologize, my company rivals.
And Doc, that website, is CDC employer?
I mean, if you look at CDC, the employers, and if you look at CDC for all the players, I just source it on the left-hand side column, you can see that's healthcare, employers, you know, schools.
The phone's breaking up.
Workers, a lot really confused, but why don't you pay? He didn't really want to do the tables, and it got dangerous a couple of days. So, it's really good, patient head, posters, they put on all, hand washing, high prevention. I've got all the clinic, I give my patient stack, if you go home, so it's really good stuff, and he can stop off, it's a very good resource.
And some of those links, I said, sharing actually on a daily basis, maybe even twice a day, for the last several weeks. As they're coming out of capacity, and all the links to the CDC are embedded, and in those documents. And there's some of the cases of how we report from each county, and the state are also embedded in that link. But it was really a lot of good information to be able to educate and be able to share with this community, partners, and the community.
Okay, Ms. Garcia, I've got one question for you.
Hi, this is Ray Griffin from the Palaca Daily News. How many people in Platte County have been tested for COVID-19?
Yeah, the way, um, when we put up the camera, or can you do it from camera?
See, can you give the testing number, the total testing numbers again, just for?
95, I think. I know she said 55 negative and 40 positive.
Forty positive, 95.
First, I thought she said 97.
97, right?
That's what I thought she said, 97.
97, 97.
How many are currently counted?
40.
40 positive.
40 positive, 55 negative. Okay. All right, we are going to, we're gonna go ahead and move forward at this time, and we're gonna move to agenda item number two. So, we got a couple of things on, and as we get ready to go into these agenda items, I'll go ahead, and one of the things that we put out was our considerations, as in, for COVID. I passed out a document, which was the City of Palaca's COVID considerations, as we move into these additional agenda items. I just want us to kinda take these things into consideration as we begin to move forward. And so, on that handout, the first thing is, there were several, there have been several executive orders that have come from the governor over the past couple of weeks, that most of you are all aware of. And I just kinda highlighted some of the things that were in some of those executive orders. Executive Order 2051, which is the first one, they issued a state of emergency. 2052 expanded the budget and made medical exemptions. 2068 limited gatherings to more, no more than 10 people, and reduced restaurants to 50% occupancy. That was limited to bars, limited bars for 30 days. And it was 14 days quarantine, recommendation for 14 days quarantine for certain symptoms. The 2069, it allowed teleconference for governmental agencies, based upon certain standards, and left other standards for meetings in, in place. It also, it relaxed the standard of having a quorum present, so that we could actually have telephonic meetings, and that still be counted as a quorum. Then 2071, closed restaurants, so that there was only takeout only, there was no consumption on the premises. It allowed restaurants to have curb service, and also, it gave an exemption to restaurants that served alcohol, to allow them to be able to to sell packages during this time period, as long as they were still packages, among other things. And one of the big issues we had in Platte County was the question of whether patrons could consume their stuff within their vehicles. Talked to, talking to the sheriff, our interpretation was, as long as that restaurant was not serving the folks at the tables at those restaurants, or whatever, if that person chose to sit in their vehicle and eat at that point, we were encouraging them to go home and get out of the elements, but we would still consider it takeout, as long as they did not sit on outside benches, or congregate outside of these places. Our, the whole goal is to continually have the positive handheld, continue to make sure we limit events. One of the things that's happening in Palaca, we've gotta be conscious of it, is we've had folks with large social gatherings, day parties, a lot of just really unwelcome activity in place, and we need to encourage against that. Also, as we move forward, there are several operational changes that have taken place, and you hear some more from the city manager. But one of the things that we did was, we closed city offices to in-person contact, except for emergency situations. And so, we were trying to make sure we limited the contact that we had with citizens, as much contact as we had in place, so that we could continue with the social distancing. We initially closed at 2:00 PM, and then we closed, then we closed it off to public contact altogether. Our trash collection continues to be on its current schedule, on its normal schedules. We closed our recreational events, and in other city events, they've been canceled until further notice. All event rules were canceled, except for those in emergency circumstances, i.e. a funeral repast, or something to that effect, and those would be on a case-by-case basis. The gas authority has gone to a drive-through-only process. And also, Mr. Dennis is here as well. And Mr. Dennis, you've gone through, as far as your termination of services at this point, what is the gas authority's total position on that?
We've stopped gas turnoffs and water turnoffs from nonpayment.
Okay, as of now, the city has stopped gas turnoffs and water turnoffs for nonpayments, until further notice is given. And so, and we'll discuss special events as we move forward into this process. My position is, that which has been with other cities, that we discontinue special events processes within the city of Palaca. We found ourselves in a situation where we had a large golf tournament in place this weekend, and we find ourselves with people from different communities coming into Palaca. And we wanna limit as much contact as we have right now, with anybody that's coming in from areas that are high-risk. And so, one of those recommendations that you're gonna see, as we move forward to this, is that we discontinue special events. Citizens are encouraged to stay at home and self-quarantine as much as possible. And also, the issue of employee leave. All employees have been deemed to be at risk, who have been deemed to be at risk or exposed, we'll get into what the strategies are, and I'll let, Mr. Shanahan get into those things as we go forward, as it relates to our policies. Where we're talking test-based policies versus policies where there has not been any testing. We also need to designate our essential employees, and we need to look at travel ban policies as it relates to employees traveling outside of the community, and also traveling out of the country. Many of the entities throughout have forbidden travel outside of the country, and they make all employees declare whatever travel they have before entering any building, even for work. And so, those are the things we need to look at. Our additional considerations will be placement of homeless citizens, purchasing of sanitizing equipment, which is something that EOC has done, or the school district, one of those entities has purchased new sanitizing equipment, and also, looking at whether it's necessary for us to have medical personnel, or some personnel in place to do temperature testing, as well as dealing with some of the logistics as it relates, long-term, into getting certain equipment in place, i.e. thermometers, testing kits, and things of that nature. And so, those are some of the things that are out there. You'll hear more from our department head as it relates to some of the concerns that we have. And first up, we'll talk about giving staff direction under item two, on suspending special events, public meetings, and programs at public facilities. And so, back on, immediately after we left South Florida, one of the things that we did is, we suspended all youth events to make sure we didn't put our kids or families at risk of large gatherings. And so, at this point, there's a, we continually recommend that we suspend our public events, programs, public facility rentals, and recreation at this time. And so, I will entertain comments from the Commission as it relates to that. Just remember that the governor's orders include no gatherings of more than 10 people, and we wanna make sure that we limit those gatherings of even essential things. We've got funeral home directors now, who are limiting funeral services to 50 people, just to try to make sure they comply with the social distancing aspects. So, any comments from the Commission?
A question.
Yes, ma'am? Ms. Brown? Well, what we're doing is funeral home directors, there's actually, there's some, there's some information that's been passed down by the governor's office in relation to funerals and other services as well, and there's been, there's been constant conversations, trying to limit those services to 50 people or less, so that you stay in somewhat, in compliance as it relates even to religious gatherings. And to make sure that we operate within social distancing, of trying to keep everyone at least six feet away. It's more difficult when you're in larger service than when you're in smaller facilities. But also, practicing the positive handheld, making sure you got the sanitizer in place, and that the facility has been sanitized prior to coming in and after accident. And so, those are some of the things that have been in place, and the local funeral home directors have actually kinda been together to do some of this stuff, and so, I can get that information over to you, but basically, they've been giving the messages to the families to try to limit the gathering at the funeral service itself, so that we can try to cut down on the spread of the virus. Or at least the risk of the spread at this point. It's limited per the governor's executive order. Commissioner Campbell?
My only comment is, I think we need to stay in line with what the governor has proposed, I don't think.
I can get you a copy of that. We can get you a copy of the governor's executive order, so that you have it in place.
Yeah, I think it's, I think we should stay in line with the executive orders that have come from the government, and not try to sway away from it, because I think it will cause more confusion.
So, we can get the, we can get the executive order over to you. Commissioner Campbell, his comment is that we should, we should try to stay in concert with the governor's executive orders, to make sure we minimize gatherings at this point. Commissioner Boreum?
My only concern, my only concern was, if we do see, if we do encounter people who have more than 10, or 20, or 30, rather large gatherings, who do we contact? Do we contact our local police department, or do we contact the sheriff's department?
The number 36 is this, law enforcement, our local law enforcement can be tasked with that. They are be tasked with enforcement of our directives. Anyone else?
Have we considered the casino gatherings also?
We're considering gatherings of every entity, so if it's made, if we're made aware of it, we move forward.
Okay, that was a question that was brought before me, and I think, has anybody addressed those, because it appears that they've been having large gatherings there as well, and I don't think they understand that they're a part of that as also, so I just wanted.
My question stems from that, when we do make contact with the appropriate authorities, and if they continue to do those things, not just so much at the casino, but at different facilities, what would be the consequence, if any consequences? Because there are also some orders showing that no arrest will be made unless it's a felony, and all of those kind of things, like, what are those?
Per the governor's executive order, a person can be incarcerated for violating any municipal order, as well as executive order, for up to 60 days and a $500 fine.
Wow.
So, those are the consequences. If there's any, if there's not any more questions, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Second.
All right, there's a motion at this time, to staff directions to suspend special events, public meetings, programs, public facilities, and recreational activities within the city of Palaca.
Mr. Griffin, I'm interpreting that as the public restrooms at the riverfront are to be closed immediately, correct?
Is that?
I would, I would highly recommend that as well.
The restroom?
Yes, I mean, even when they were, and I'm thinking that, because I'm looking at what they're doing in Duval, even with the testing, when they're doing the drive-through testing, the public restrooms were closed for that, as well, just for safety precaution. So, why would we keep the public restrooms open? Who's gonna, you know, I just, I just recommend that they're closed, they can close.
Was that a part of your motion?
Were you making a motion on that?
I mean, that's, I mean, I would like to have more discussion. I mean, I've taken it in consideration, but as it relates to public restrooms, you want staff to have direction? Staff to have discretion? Yes.
So, staff has discretion on public restrooms?
I mean, because we have a lot of people coming in from out of town, that's, I understand, public safety, but again, we don't want our facility, we don't want downtown to, people start using the restroom outside, and all of that kinda stuff, so we can do pathfinding, some kind of.
Periodic, periodic checks, you know, periodic checks, and clean, you know.
I believe it's a staff discretion.
I prefer to have a first timeline, time line.
So, if you keep the restrooms open, you're encouraging people to congregate at the parks. Closing all the other public facilities, playgrounds included, and you keep that support facility online, it's encouraging people to come out and gather in groups. We don't like shutting them down, because we know there's a small subset of the population that lives on the boats, on the water, and they'll use the park, or they'll use the park as a restroom if the restrooms aren't open. But I think you're creating a situation where you got people coming in going, we only have the capability of cleaning it twice a day. I don't think it's in line with everything else that you've done. That's my only concern.
Okay, well, staff discretion, I second that.
Yeah.
So, motion on Florida, second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. In favor, say aye.
All right.
The motion carries unanimously.
There's a question that's been proposed, regards to, I know, churches, and what are the thoughts on that?
Churches are, there's, there are some initiatives that are in place to deal with faith-based organizations as well. We're encouraging churches to do the same thing that everyone else is doing, to follow the governor's executive order. You know, the governor's laid out guidelines as to what's in place. They've given some discretion to the cities, and to the counties as to what to do, but our position has been consistent. We are to stay in concert with the governor's orders.
Well, I know some, some churches are getting a little bit creative, I understood, I kinda heard some.
The drive-through church?
Well, yeah, when people pull up in their vehicles, or what have you, so that's unique, it's uncharted territory, so, you know, I don't know how, I don't know if we have any jurisdiction as it relates to that, I'm not privy to that, what do you?
It's all health, safety, welfare. At the end of the day, the biggest thing we wanna do is make sure that we, that we create situations that provide the greatest somehow of safety. We can continually encourage churches to try to follow the executive order of the governor. That's where we are. Recommendation for citywide policy, COVID-19 symptoms at-risk employees and positive test results, Mr. Shanahan?
We're on the, your employee policies.
Yes, sir. Right now, we've got it set up that if an employee shows any sign of anything, they go home. Yes, sir. An employee shows any sign of anything, they go home. We've also talked to our department heads about use of flex time, because if we start losing people, we've also talked to them about working remotely, and so, once they go home, if they've And so once they go home, if they've had, if they took a test, we're looking at using a strategy where employees are tested positive for COVID-19, they shall not return to work until after they've had two negative test results and no respiratory symptoms or fevers in 72 hours. And the two tests have to be taken 24 hours apart from each other. For non-test-based policy, employees exhibiting symptoms will be placed on leave for, for no less than 72 hours of recovery. And again, they can't be using any medication to get rid of whatever it could have.
Fever, respiratory symptoms.
Yes, sir. And so that's what we've been looking at with that currently. We have sent five folks home and they will be following that policy. We're using our webpage, our Facebook and our media, keep our citizens informed on what we're doing. So that would do that. Hey, you want to help out travel or anything?
Let's go through the, let's get the adoption of the test-based policy. So on the test-based policy, one of the things that's been recommended to us by executive order is that no person being, who's tested positive for coronavirus be allowed to return back to work until they've had two negative tests. And it's, it's positioned and recommendation of that the council adopt that policy into place. That, because the two negative tests and the several will ensure that we are in a better, we're in a position where that they are not susceptible to the virus anymore before coming back and put us in a position where we're now losing essential staff or anyone else at this point. And so if there's no further discussion from the commission on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the test-based policy.
Second.
This is most on the floor and the second. Any further discussion?
Of course.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. The next one is our non-test-based policy. And what this policy says that if any person leaves out, goes out with symptoms and they have to be, and they're, they're going out to be tested, they're going out to get medical attention based upon showing symptoms of, any of the symptoms of COVID-19, which is the respiratory, the respiratory symptoms as well as fever, as well as fever, the running of the cough, all those things are in place if we're concerned that they've had some exposure. That person will be, will be placed on leave for no less than 72 hours, at which time they may, they may return 72 hours after recovery, which gives them a minimum of seven days from the time in which they had their, their symptoms in place. What we're seeing is we've had some folks within our staff who've actually gone and been tested, or they've gone out with symptoms, gone to the, gone to the doctor or they've been checked out and deemed to have not been, not been tested for COVID, but they have certain symptoms in place. And we've actually been deploying mechanisms which allow them to, to basically be off work for a set period of time. And so we're, we're at, so at this point, we're asking to be able to adopt a non-test, a non-test policy for our employees, which says that they have to be out for at least, they're going to be out for at least 72 hours and no less than seven days depending on what symptoms they're exhibiting.
So move.
Second.
This is motion on the floor. The second, is there any further discussion? Any comments from our supervisors? Chief, I know you've experienced some stuff. Any questions from either one of the chiefs as it relates to this policy?
No, I think it basically summed up my concern for inside that policy as far as the, you know, what can we do as far as employees and when can we bring them back? I think that, that policy addresses our concerns. Because we, the problems we're facing is sometimes this stuff lays around for a while before it's symptomatic. And if we have early signs of the test, we maybe can eliminate from running through our staffs. And that was the important part about getting that in so we can be able to monitor our, our people.
Chief Shaw?
I agree that staff is right now is a concern due to the possible exposure portion. So with the, any positive exposures could have a major effect on staff. Effect on staff could address on how we additionally handle response.
And it also puts you in a position where you may be called to be on full activation at any point.
Well, I'd just like to know how do they handle as it relates to, if they get a call out, whether it's the police or fire, you know, coming in contact, I mean, with their PPE. How, how does that work? Example?
I can answer that. As of right now, PPE is limited. I mean, is that, everybody knows it's very, very limited to be able to get it out there in the general population. And we're also being affected by that. So the places that we have put in right now is the calls are being screened at our 911 center, okay? And if they're COVID potential possible patients, we're not sending fire crews if the patient's conscious and alert and talking to them and they can sustain themselves. We're limiting the amount of folks that we put in contact with them. And if we may get to a point where we have to go assist these people, but at the moment we're just limiting our exposure to the.
Also our response call, what we're getting alerted ahead of time is to ensure we have the proper protective equipment to go in and be able to address those calls. It doesn't say that we don't respond to the calls. It just says it gives us the information to know how to approach those calls and what we're facing when we get there. So there's been some parameters put in place so we can at least be able to effectively address it, but we're doing as much as we can. And we've already alerted our staff and our staff know that we signed up for it and we're going to do everything that we can to attempt to prevent it, but we still have to address calls for service.
Do you have adequate supply?
The, no, sir. For what we're dealing with, we have placed orders. If you say adequate supply, I would tell you I have currently enough for my staff and a small supply in reserve. So there could be cases as we move up that we could go through our PPEs as quickly as and within two days.
Is there anything we can do to get that addressed? I mean, we certainly don't want, we've got, anything we can do as it relates to the PPE? We will set out a work. We need to work something through with that. Thank you, sir.
We're, we're, we place it out, order sent through the EOC as far as the web portal, but for, for right now, it's so much is on back order. It's just, you just, we got to wait until we can actually get some in. But we have placed an order and hopefully we can get some in in the first part of April.
Okay, I do know Amazon was just nothing but doing it the way.
But what that leads to, what that leads to, your question, which is a very good question that leads to what we talked about before, is having someone in place who can deal with logistics for the city as a whole during this time period, whether that's authority to allocate some temporary funding. We got some vacancies within the city where we can allocate temporary funding to deal specifically with these issues. Someone who's going to be there to try to find masks, someone's going to be there to try to find equipment, to find these different things. And I think it's necessary because what we're going to find is we're all going to be scrambling around in circles and not have the ability to get there. But if we've got someone in place, because this is the thing, it's not just planning for today, but it's planning on what this thing does three months from now or a month from now, is where we need to be. And we just need to make sure that we're in a position where we're prepared more than anything else. And so those are some of the things that we're, we want to, we're going to address as we move forward. And so, and it's right on point with what we've been discussing overall, is having someone in place who can, who can find that stuff. Because it's really, for our first responders, it's definitely critical. But even as we talk about what Mr. Dennis does with the gas authority on their calls, because no one's really screening their calls in the same way when they go out to a home to deal with the service issue or public works. And so those are all the things that we put in place because we're all dealing with, with a foreign, with foreign territory. And we're, and it's a scramble worldwide, not just locally. And so we're finding some things coming online, but a lot of things, there has to be someone who knows how to make the right call to get to the right stuff.
Can I ask a question? Is it sentencing that the league works here when they have disasters and stuff?
I spoke to the league on this and I talked to the league today on this, what the league is doing, the league is following the governor's orders at this time, and they're still following what's going on through the health department, no differently than what we're doing at the local level. I spoke to Scott Dudley earlier today, and that's where they are. It, it, it's new territory for everyone. You know, this is far different than preparing for hurricane, that we know that event's going to come in, we can almost target where it hits. This event is, it's just uncharted. And so those are some of the things we've got. So with that being in place.
I was just wondering about supplies, you know, they, they usually keep.
They don't, they don't have a stockpile in this situation. And so, and so the question, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion from, from the commission to give the city manager authority to bring a logistics person home if necessary to deal specifically with some of the, some of the issues that may come up in this position on a part-time basis.
We had really, don't finish the other motion, I think, did you?
Well, no, I think we, we finished that other one.
We haven't made a motion.
No, because I made a comment, I think I made a comment on the PPE stuff.
Okay.
Shaw, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow for the city manager to have a temporary logistics person for the PPE and other logistics as it relates to.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and the second, any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Mr. Shanahan?
Essential employee. Oh, yeah, maybe, can I go back for a second and ask a question, mayor? You said that five, five of our employees that have been sent home, which department? Can I ask which department?
We'll, we'll brief you on that after the meeting, which is so that we don't disclose too much for the personal information.
Okay.
Basically, I mean, we have our emergency folks, our fire, our police and some of our public works folks, but what I would like to do is sit, go, sit down with, discuss with each of the department heads, the more important thing on if there's any other positions that I might not know about that they deem as an emergency position. And then once that's done, I will send out this deal. And we're also looking at, again, looking at working remotely next time. Just because we sent someone home doesn't mean that that won't work.
Okay, so we don't have a remote work policy at this point. And basically all we need to do is, and it's within your purview, under, under your discretion, to be able to identify the folks who would be eligible to work from home. And so if you can just give, if you can just provide the list of essential personnel and remote from work, home folks, how would you, if you have a mechanism in place to monitor?
Basically, I've already talked to the department heads and told them to stop thinking about that, making sure that they understand that. We will, we will identify what work is being done and we will have some, some sort of accountability put in place for each department.
And Inspire has already created.
They already set us up, he can.
And so, and so we're already set up, so.
That would take care of.
Yeah.
And so we'll, and so we'll go ahead and develop the work from home strategy as it relates to what's in place.
But there'll be some way to measure it.
And the last, what's your, and the last thing you have?
I, I agree with what's written here. We, we should not be allowing any of our folks to go anywhere at this time that have high concentration in this in addition to that. They don't want anyone going overseas. If you go, if you go overseas.
No, no, I, okay.
If you go overseas, you're not coming back. And then anybody that goes overseas, no one there, you know, they'll, they'll have to use their own leave for that because that's something that they're choosing to do rather than have no option with. So we made a drill board that that's in place.
Okay, so the recommendation is that we, is that we limit, that we have a travel ban in place for international travel for employees and also that we require our employees to declare any time that they, they're leaving outside of the county. And we know that we have some employees that live outside of the county. And so we want to make sure, so with those employees, we're already on point with that. But if they leave outside the general area from where they're coming, then we make sure we have those things in place. And again, they're going to deal with the general questions that we're going to ask as it relates to those areas and, and also the screening processes that will be in place. So are there any questions as it relates to travel? If not, I entertain a motion.
I just want to ask this question and maybe a little quicker, it's sounding crazy.
There is a crazy question in this process.
Going out of county to go shopping.
If you go out of county, one thing you have to look at is when you look at some of the surrounding areas, Latoya County per capita has had significant exposure to coronavirus. But you, when you look at what's the opportunities for exposure, it only takes, you know, one person coming in, not being, not social distancing or doing certain things for that spread to hit us. And so in those situations, when you go into those critical areas and they're already defined by the health department and EOC, you just want to make sure that we take the proper steps when the person has traveled into those areas to screen them to make sure that they're not exhibiting any symptoms as well. And then it puts us on notice to try to make sure we isolate them as much as we can so that there's no, it's a reduced incident of them being able to provide additional infection to anyone else. So with that in place, is there a motion to accept the, you know, travel, the travel restrictions?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner McCaskill, the second, by Commissioner Campbell. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Are you got anything else, Mr. Shanahan?
No, sir.
Additional considerations are going to be placement of homeless citizens. Has there, Ryan, are you still on board with us?
Yes, sir.
Ryan?
Yes, this is Ryan. We can still hear you.
Hey, Ryan, have you guys given, have you guys taken on any, given any, anything, any processes in place as it relates to homeless citizens? I know there's been some external groups that have been chartered for, for feeding and doing some other things during, during this time period relates to some of the students and homeless as well. Are there anything in place that the county's doing at this point that maybe needs to be remembered by the city?
Yes, so the, the county's mission, as directed by the Department of Health, to respond to COVID-19 concerns. And so we are focused on the response to that. There has been no, no planning here to use it to homeless populations.
Yeah, for the diners, so for making sure that food is handed out and back, to go to school and some of our.
Elderly?
Kids that are supposed, that are handing out food.
Okay, so I'll, we'll, I'll reach out to some of those organizations like Feed the Need and see what their position is as it relates to, as it relates to the homeless population and also to the homeless coalition. Thank you.
Just, just a suggestion, as noted by the CDC, no gatherings greater than 10 in support. So this is any consideration for, for planning, maybe have to be.
Right, and that's, and so that's one of the things that we've been pushing as well. Thank you. And last thing is purchasing of, we talked about purchasing sanitizing equipment as well as opportunities that we have. There's an opportunity to purchase testing equipment as well. And there are some private testing organizations that are available to do that. And so one of the things that we would ask is that authority be given to the city manager or the logistics personnel to be able to purchase testing equipment if necessary for the city of Palatka. And so we would ask that that be done at the threshold of the $5,000 threshold initially, and if we need additional guidance, we go from there.
So move.
Second.
So motion on the floor and the second, any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed motion carries unanimously. Are there any further comments? Chief, anything, Chief Shaw? Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir.
Chief Grimes?
Just so you know, I've already put a requisition into testing equipment. It's already, it's going through the approval process now.
And you have moved, you guys operate in a different location.
Well, that, that's, that's the plan right now. That was part of the whole secure of this building at the riverfront. Because operationally, we have multiple people inside of a fire station at one time. So I'm trying to limit the amount of exposure. So at, at any given shift change inside that station where eight people are coming at path with one another, I'm trying to limit that down. So what I've, I've asked about doing it, the city manager was moving an engine down to the ship center or ship store and just staging it there with a crew of two, leaving a crew of two at the main station on 11th Street, continuing our operations at the, at the fire station at the airport. But it's, this gives us, where we're passing a, a, a group of two versus a group, I mean, sorry, a group of four being exposed versus a group of eight. Because if I lose eight, I in essence lose a one-third of my staff. And right now, we can't afford that. So that, that's, that's the basis behind that move.
And that's where the restroom closure becomes critical for him.
Correct.
Because it keeps, it limits the public exposure to those guys.
I have a question. With the five that were exposed potentially or were sent home, what are the plans for the individuals that worked with those five that were sent home? Are we going to be proactive and test them? Because do you want to go ahead and address the problem as a whole or do we want to wait till they actually display symptoms knowing that it can take 14 days?
The five that were, the five that were sent home worked together.
Okay, so I need to correct something. We haven't had five that were sent home as a. We haven't had five that were sent home as of yet. We are waiting for, for testing for.
Yeah, and basically what, uh, uh, is if they show a positive, then they will, they will do what you just said. That, that's, that's the process that's being used right now. That, that comes out from the state. Am I correct in reference to the others? The, the one from my office, uh, she went to the hospital and she didn't have it. There was some type of sinus thing, so she's good to go. We'll be back tomorrow because.
72 hour response policy just about.
Yeah.
For us, it would be, uh, uh, as Mr. Shanahan just spoke of, would be a positive test from, uh, someone that was in.
In contact.
Uh, once that positive test is in place by, uh, Putnam County Health Department in the state of Florida, we would have to force, we send them home for quarantine for up to 14 days, uh, to see if they begin showing symptoms and then we go from there.
And, and they've already identified those folks that they were sent home.
That's correct.
So we're in the pipeline. So we know who they are.
Yeah, okay. Anything else further? I'm sorry. Chief, Mr. Griffith, you got anything? Mr. Dennis?
The only thing I wanted to mention was we, with, uh, looking for the PPE, we have, we have tried to be proactive when we have some, but if some is acquired, we'd like to be on the list to get some. Our biggest concern would be to go to an emergency at a quarantine house, gas smell, water heater out, that they consider an emergency and we have to expose our people. Right now, I have two sets that we could use over and over again, but any PPE you're able to get, we can be on that list, be great. Thank you.
Then the room say that if you go in and it's in there, you can't use that same suit again? Because then when they put it on again, they're going to get it.
Our, our masks are not the, the fiber ones, they're the, the, the full cartridges. We have alcohol to spray them down. We consider it disinfectant.
Okay.
But we prefer not to use them over again.
In the hallway, anything for us to cut, right? Uh, Commissioner Borum?
No, just, no, we're just in, uh, uncharted territory right now and, uh, we just want to make sure that, uh, the public knows that they need to maintain limited mobility and, uh, safe social distance and what have you. So and just make sure that we follow the CDC guideline and, uh.
Commissioner Kim? I would echo the same sentiment. So Commissioner Borum, not to delay the call, so. Mike, Mayor?
Well, all we want to do is make sure we feel safe and, and that.
Commissioner McCaskill?
Just, um, echoing the same sentiment, making sure that if we practice it ourselves and everybody just put in the fight, so, you know, practice the social distancing that, uh, we can head off this situation, so.
Anything from anyone else?
I do have one thing. Um, will we be able to kind of put down a fact sheet that we could be able to display, um, kind of like the concerns that we have here, the concerns that we have here, that we'll be able to give post on social media for our citizens?
Yes, sir. And not only that, I would like to take some of this information and tell the radio station. Okay, get that message out there.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll be a reception morning. I'll be there in the morning. But, and then we can also do, uh, we can give it to Scoop District and try to see if they'll let us.
You know why the main one is the one in the radio station?
Everybody knows that.
Yeah, and the whole, we want, we just, whatever that blurb is, whatever that blurb is, that we all be on the same, same page.
I think we got to, that's why we gave that, those written.
Okay, I just didn't want to give them the whole, some of.
You don't have to just, you can just use it as you're talking. All right. Uh, and then also make sure you continually send people to Putnam Alert. Anything else from you?
Yeah, for the Putnam Alert question.
PutnamAlert.com.
Two other things.